Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular meetings of the Housing Successor, Successor Agency and City Council to order. Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno is not here. Mayor Protem Zamora.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here, thank you. I would like to call upon Mayor Protem Zamora to give the invocation.
You guys can please stand. Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on this council as we meet tonight. Grant us both wisdom and compassion as we make decisions about the future of our community. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
And now I would like to call upon Valerie Bocorres from the Youth Leadership Committee to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please state your names and your hobbies and what school you go to.
Hi, my name is Valerie Bocorres. I currently attend Santa Fe High School. I'm a junior. I play soccer there and my hobbies, I just like to be outside, enjoy nature.
Hi, everyone. I'm Zulama Gamboa. I go to Santa Fe High School as well. I'm in ASV, and my hobbies are to paint.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The City Clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once Deputy City Clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Currently, we have two people here wanting to speak. The first one will be Tim Nally.
Thank you, Tim.
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Tim Nally, 10907 El Largo Drive, would you? I'm speaking regarding Greenleaf Avenue, both north and south, they need to be repaved. Coming from Los Nettos down towards Lambert. It's like this, looked like someone missed it. Stadium, towards his way, crosswalk needs to be restripped. And out in front of the school, as the students are entering, we got a lot of potholes. They should be taken care of where someone wrecked their car. Coming out of the stadium, there's a couple of potholes. One for people leaving the stadium and one for the students that are leaving the parking lot, student parking lot. They got a pothole on each end. Should be taken care of. The school started a few weeks ago. They should be taken care of. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stella Bastida.
Hi, Stella.
Hello, good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity. I've been a resident of this city for many years. My parents have owned their home for 50 years on Bradwell Avenue, and this is my first council meeting that I'm attending. And I may, my voice may be a little shaky only because I'm coming here with such passion, and this is long, many, many, long overdue. Grievances, concerns that my fellow neighbor on the block were coming with from our parents and our collective neighbors. So on the, first off, let's talk about the lack of traffic stops on Terradale onto Pioneer Boulevard and on Ornday Boulevard with Whiteland. Many times when we're exiting those blocks to get onto Pioneer Boulevard or Ornday, there are stop signs, but no one adheres to those stop signs. Many times during school hours, getting kids to school, picking them up from school, cars are just going straight through those stop signs where there are near accidents. I have been almost hit many times with children in the cars, in the car. And so when I've called Police Services or I've called Whittier PD to voice my concerns, and all I get from them is, well, there's nothing we could do about it unless we place a patrol. Over and over, patrols will be there, cars stop, they're on their best behaviors, and then the, once the patrol's gone, the terrible traffic appearance resumes. So what is it going to take for us to get either a traffic light or some serious attention to both those streets? And avoid something seriously happening because the last comment I received from Police Services, but the Traffic Division at Whittier PD was, well, there's basically not enough injuries. So how many injuries need to happen? How many collisions need to happen? How many individuals, residents, need to be injured for this to seriously something to be taken? And traffic, some type of sign, because her family, they're elderly, and they're constantly going to doctor's appointments, and it's almost, let's see who can cross safely without getting injured. Okay, so we have a little diagram of our concerns, and then another, we have a small park on our block. There's constant police activity there. There are young kids out there doing [bleep].
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I didn't get your address. Thank you.
Next, we have Raymond Reyes.
Or having fire department permits pulled as well, too. I want to know why this individual is running for City Council, was allowed to do an event, or is he going to get reprimanded for doing this event? So it's Gabriel Jimenez hosted at the car show, also with Annette Rodriguez and Francis Carpon. You guys hosted an event without pulling permits. I want to know why. I have to pull permits. You guys didn't pull permits. Can you explain why? It was a public event. Any questions? Any, any, say anything to us? Let us know why you guys didn't pull permits?
We are not allowed to, to speak. It's your time to speak, public comments.
Well, I'm just curious why you didn't pull a permit for an event that you guys hosted, inviting everyone to come out and support you guys, but no one took the common courtesy to pay their permit fees. I have to pay permit fees when I do an event, or going to go in with someone on an event, I have to pay. I want to know what's going to happen to these individuals who hosted illegal events, basically stealing revenue from our city. So hopefully you guys can look into that and something can get done about it, because that is just shady to me. Like, you're running for City Council, but you want to host illegal events. Tell me why that's possible, why that's even allowed? Everyone should pay their permits and do the proper things and the proper steps to make it work for the city. And if you can't comply, then you shouldn't run, because that's just shady. Have a nice day.
Madam Mayor, there's no one else wishing to speak, and nobody has their hand raised via Zoom.
All right, thank you. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, Housing Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number six?
I'll move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number seven?
We'll move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Item number eight, City Council Agenda. We have eight consent items, A through H. Is there a motion for the approval of the City Council Consent Agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Old Business, item number nine, authorize the implementation of the Home Security Camera Rebate Program. I would like to call upon Director of Public Services, Dino Torres.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, I presented the Home Security Camera Rebate Program, and that's a program that provides our residents with an incentive to purchase and install a security camera. So this would help protect their home and could help our public safety team if and when there was a crime. And this is also a program that would add to the diversity of programming we currently have in our department. Following that presentation, there was discussion, some questions and answers, ultimately leading to the creation of an ad hoc committee that comprised the mayor and Mayor Protem, and that was done to review the program and make any necessary adjustments or modifications. The committee met once on August 24th and made some modifications that I'll go over with you in the second slide, not this slide. And so I'll present those four to you following a summary of the slide we have here before you. So again, it's a Home Security Camera Rebate Program. The maximum one-time rebate is $150 per address or property owner. You must own or rent in the city. Three is, if you're, if you're renting, then you need permission from the property owner. Four up there is that the security device must be new. Five is the price of the camera before taxes or anything else is $200. And then lastly is, again, what I just mentioned, that the, the cost, the, the cost should be 200, and that doesn't include anything other than the camera, no storage accessories or things like that. We wouldn't pay for anything like that. Let me go to the next slide, please. So what we looked at, and the ad hoc committee agreed upon, is to raise from $100 to $150 rebate, and that's consistent with the cities that we looked at, that I looked at. They hover in that range. Secondly, the appropriations, they thought the appropriations should be $30,000. I came to you originally for a $10,000 appropriation. Then there was some talk, I think $100,000. When we met, $30,000 was, would be appropriate, considering the size of our city. Many other cities that are five times the size have $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 appropriated. Limit the participation to one time only, and then limit the rebate to one per property owner. And that kind of sums up what the adjustment modifications were to the program. Any, any questions?
Is this, aside from the criteria that you have, is this going to be a, like an income base, or is it open to everybody?
No, it's, it's open to everyone. If you, if you, if you, if you include income base, then what you're doing is you're limiting the pool. And what we're trying to do is reach as many people as possible.
Now, we're going to do maybe, I know that's going to be a first come, first served, right?
Right.
Would a lottery work in this particular situation?
I'm sorry.
Lottery?
Oh, no, no, not a lottery. So what we've seen is that in, in other cities that are doing it, they don't expend all, all the funds. There's one city that does, and they've upped it from $15,000 to $20,000, but typically you don't see them expend all the funds.
And it, you know, it's going to be from when, the day that you open this up, and moving forward, nobody can turn in an old receipt or anything.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then this will get revol, you know, like a revolving system for next year, every year. And then it's just appropriating the $30,000 just to make sure that everybody has an opportunity. And of course, it's, it's for all cameras, not just for ring specific. It's for all cameras and, and then we did $30,000 because it was more of an even number for us. Doing the 150, people who did $200 or $100 usually, they either did $15,000, $20,000, or $40,000. So everybody was roughly around that same system around us, so we wanted to stay close to everyone else instead of, you know, hurting our other cities around us. But of course, we do have that revolving door that allows $30,000 for the next year and potential years, so.
Are we doing this at the Public Safety Office, or is it going to be out of consent? Everything will be out of the Public Safety Office?
That's correct. So you can mail in, or you can walk in there, and we'll be glad to help you.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
And I also want to say this is a great program. Just recently, we had some activity on Bradwell across the street from our former mayor, Lori Reel's house, and the cops were called, and, and there was just some bad element going on, and this is for the safety of our residents. And I'm just really happy that we have this program to help our residents.
Yeah, and, and they're, you know, just hearing the, the same thing now, in that little area, you don't really get camera action, and the fact if, you know, if you have one or two households that have that, it really does help out that parquet area because the activity that they had was gang activity, so you know, why they were utilizing that park, no one knows. And it's just something that, you know, I'm glad that, you know, Whittier PD was on top of it. I think they send like nine patrol officers out there, you know, just to help get rid of every, everybody, but they did find some, some illegal activity, so that's, that's something that we just got to continue to work on, and maybe even potentially looking at cameras at our parquets. I know we have it at, but we have to look at placing cameras at our parquet, so it makes it easier for us to see this and, you know, maybe see any kind of activity ourselves. So I'd probably recommend that that's something we need to look at, just besides, you know, the cameras that we have, you know, on the community. So if we can look at that, I'd greatly appreciate it, and I'm pretty sure everybody, when it comes to the safety of our residents, you know, now you have a smart, smart light system. I mean, we're trying to do a smart city, so we're trying to do Wi-Fi everywhere. But if we do that, we can have smart parks, which actually allows children and families to use the Wi-Fi at parks that, that, that we're able to recommend. But, you know, having some kind of smart lights that actually, they're, they're prone to hear any type of activity. It could be even gang activity, you could hear names, and then they start recording just instantaneously when somebody's there, or they hear something that shouldn't be done.
I have a question. I have just a concern. Since this is for everyone, say we have a senior living by themselves, and they have no family. Could we do something, maybe some type of a, a program or something? So the seniors that can't, you know, install it, could we do something? Is there anything that we have, like a group, like maybe we can do like the Boy Scout or any of those to help out?
Yeah, we, we actually talked about too, since it's the initial part, but if we do get seniors, we're going to be looking at even the staffing, you know, working with either Public Works, probably like individuals like Abel. I mean, he doesn't know that, but, you know, just working with them to actually help out, or actually even asking, like you said, you know, whether it be Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, or anybody else who's looking to actually look for some volunteer hours, that's other things that we're looking at, too.
Yeah, that'd be great, you know, get somebody, because I, this is an excellent program, but like I said, if it was, there are some seniors who can't do it, they'll get turned off because they'll figure out, if I can't have it installed, why get it? But yeah, I think maybe like the Boy, somebody will be able to do it, and, but we still, with us not being liable, if we install it, we don't have any liability with that.
And, and I, I also said, if, if you have grandkids, go to your grandkids, because I do, and they helped me set up my smartphone. I didn't know what I was doing, but my grandson did. And also, if you have a, see, you know, you know what I'm talking about, and if you do have a camera already, and it's, it's three years old, and you just feel like you need to, you know, get an upgrade, just feel free to join this rebate program. Don't feel guilty because you got a camera and you can't get this other one, right, Dino? This is one, one camera per family. So if it's, it's getting beaten up and you would like to upgrade to a nicer camera, just, it's okay, right?
Yeah, so we're not limiting anyone. If you have an existing camera, then you can participate in this too, right? Because we want more coverage, or maybe your camera's been, it's three or five years old, it's older, so, so we're not limiting anyone.
Right, all right.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, Councilmembers, Amora mentioned a staff member. So I don't know if that was me on a volunteer basis or a paid basis, because if it's a paid basis and overtime, we need a.
No, we're, we're talking about volunteer bases.
Involuntary, okay, as long as you've got that.
Everybody here is volunteer basis when it comes to putting it in. Maybe even Noi Negreta might be able to go out there and help us out.
All right. Is there a motion for the approval of item number nine?
Before I motion, just a quick comment. I know that we can't force people. Let's say that, God forbid, something does happen, it's caught on camera. I know we cannot force anybody to, you know, show us the camera what's going on, but I think maybe just if we just have the courage, you know, if it's on the camera and, you know, our police are able to use it, we could probably encourage them to, you know, cooperate with us. And a lot of people are very hesitant to show their.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, that's a good point. You brought it up last time. So we'll, we'll encourage that. I, I want to say that we've had a lot of participation when our crimes, right? We've had some that haven't, but we've had a lot of people that, that have given us video. And so, so again, I would say this is 100% better than, than having nothing.
Exactly.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Dino.
All right. Is there a motion for the approval of item number nine?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. And I'd like to thank Dino for setting all this up and getting everything ready for tonight's meeting. Thank you. New Business, item number 10, Approval of the 2023 Art Fest Professional Services Agreement. I would like to call upon Family and Human Services Manager, Ed Ramirez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Wonderful counsel. As councils aware, on May 6th, we held our SFS Art Fest to include the preview and showcase night on May 5th, after a two-year cancellation due to the COVID-19 pandemic. On February 15th, City Council approved a professional service agreement with Crepes and Grapes Cafe, I'll see Sandra Han, for the amount of $39,600. This actually was a difference of $10,000 that we had already paid her, and she agreed to apply from the 2021 Art Fest that was canceled due to, due to the pandemic. Ultimately, the, the overall PSA was a total of $49,600. Moving forward now to 2023, we have scheduled the Art Fest for April 28th, from 3:00 to 11:00, and the preview and showcase night on April 27th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. This is actually, we wanted to avoid the Single the Mile Weekend, as well as the Mother's Day Weekend, that basically gone on the first or second weekend of May. Moving forward with the actual recommendations, talking with the, the advisory, the Heritage Arts Advisory, there are some recommendations, is to enhance the preview and showcase night. This actually would include the artisan vendors. In the past, you may recall, the booths were empty, and this actually will allow us and give more opportunity to attract and draw in more artisans. In fact, that'll also bring in some more revenue, applying them and having them for both the preview and showcase night and the event itself. Also is to include a paint and wine activity for a nominal fee, and then continue working in collaboration with the showcase night with our Santa Fe Springs Chamber. Another recommendation is to remove the live chalk art displays that we've had in the past, and to incorporate the Parks and Recreation Chalk It Out program that's been successful, and then at that particular display or exhibit will be highlighting the winners of the Chalk It Out program, and then recognize them as our community participants. See? To help, this year, we, we actually did incur a, an increase, of course, post-COVID, with supplies and rentals and, and equipment. And this year, we are proposing to provide entry fees for both participants, as well as artists and film artists. For the preview and showcase night, we're proposing to have a $10 entry fee, which includes the beer and wine tasting, an appetizer that we've traditionally done. We're also proposing the paint and wine, which would be a $35 entry fee. That would also include the same benefits of the $10 entry with the beer and wine tasting. We also, as part of that, we, in collaboration with the Chamber, we have participated in numerous mixers or business morning meeting mixers, and we've provided some VIP tickets, and we were still going to plan to utilize and print 100 of those tickets for those particular events. Should an individual want to participate in the paint and wine, they will still have to pay the difference of the $25 fee, but then they can use the, apply the VIP ticket for the event. Now, entry fees for students 18 and under would be free for both events, so they, they would not be part of this, this entry fee. Film artists, again, entry fee, we would have a $25 submittal to include the screening and Q and A, which we'd normally have done. And an artist artwork fee would be a $20 fee, which would include two art pieces as submittals, which we've done traditionally, which would be $10 each piece. And again, for these particular artists, if they're 16, if they're 18 years and younger, the, the artwork is free to submit their artwork. And well, of course, the city will continue to apply the 20% selling fee for the artwork sold. Also, we are proposing a new level of sponsorship. We feel that this may entice a, a bigger interest from, from either an organization, business, private party, perhaps utilizing one of the rooms in the Clark Estate, and provide potentially a, the rooftop or overlook to, to view the, the Art Fest event, to include it to our host bar, which are the same drinks that we would be selling on that particular event, and appetizers, and we're proposing that to be a $7,500 sponsorship. Now, having said this, with our consultant, our consultant, you know, having this dialogue with her and, and moving forward, trying to negotiate a lower cost from the original $49,600, she's agreed to do this year and assisting with, with our curation of artwork for $45,950. The city will take on some other areas, a minimal, when it comes to print. We also will be helping cover the cost of the awards for the recommendations of the advisory. The awards are for the, the guest and featured artists, which we've provided in the past. So she is, the, the art consultant is proposing a $45,950. This is budgeted within the expense of the Public Art and Education Program Fund, and then new with the applied or the imposed fees, we're looking at a minimum estimate of about $15,000 to aid with cost recovery expenses. That's minimum. So I mean, I think with, with, potentially, if people do, do come, and, and we did have a successful event, we could potentially make more to help cost recover this event. And with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just have a recommendation. As long as we do, we start earlier on looking for sponsors. Usually, we always, I feel that we start a little too late. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think since we already know what we're doing next year, I mean, we could always start now. So if you guys can do that, work with the staff, work with the, the hack committee, do whatever you guys can to start as soon as possible. Because then at least that lets us know what we need in the, you know, when we get closer.
Okay, are there any questions?
I just have one quick question. For the high school kids, you know, they're not going to be charged for their artwork. Oh, the high school kids aren't going to be charged for their artwork. Do we have a lot of college students that participate in it, too?
Not as much as high school. What, we definitely can identify those college students.
I, I think if we maybe can extend it, if it's a student in general, could we do that, the waiver of the fee, just in case they are students in college, too? I don't know if it's okay with the council. Let me make it, expand it to college, because I think college kids are, have a, you know, they're more strapped for money than, than the high school kids.
Well, I think if you do college, and you have to do overall, all college, because we do have senior citizens that are in college, too.
Yeah, college students that are in there.
And then as long as they show their, their ID to their college, perfect, their student ID. I'm, I'm good with that.
Students that are in there will know the artwork in.
Mm-hmm, yeah, good idea.
All right. Good. Well, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of item number 10.
I'll move.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered.
And that's what the amended. Yeah, with the directive.
Item number 11, Adopt Resolution Number 9815, Approving Changes to the Salary Schedule and Approval of Related Personnel Modifications. I would like to call upon Director of Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just a follow-up item from our, our budget adoption, there were a number of personnel changes included in the budget, so Resolution 9815 approves changes to the salary schedule and changes to the job specifications for a number of positions. It was a very minor update to the mechanic one and the mechanic two job specifications. We created a new salary levels and job specifications for the mechanic assistant and electrician assistant. These were formerly hourly apprentice positions. And then we also have separated our grounds and maintenance supervisor into, we had a grounds and maintenance lead worker, so the lead worker's been reclassified to supervisor, so we'll have two supervisors, one's over. a two supervisors, one's over grounds and one over streets. The the all of the job specifications went through review by the Employee Association. And we addressed their their concerns. And so we're asking for approval of Resolution Nine Eight One Five to affect those changes. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? All right. If there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of item number eleven.
I'll move.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number twelve, Approval of Parcel Map Number Eight Two Zero Three One, One One Two One Two, Norwalk Boulevard. I would like to call upon Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, Council. Just, this is a pretty straightforward one. This is consolidating seven parcels into one. It's on Norwalk Boulevard. And the planning commission approved the tentative plan already. Any questions?
Thank you, Noe. No.
Any questions? Okay, I thought someone had some questions. All right. If there's no discussion or motion for the approval of item number twelve?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number thirteen, Water Feature Maintenance Services Agreement, Approval of Agreement. I would like to call upon Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. So this one here, we're bringing this back, if you recall. I'm sure if you can hear me well there. You recall that this contract will expire in February of next year. In May, we brought this to you to see if we wanted to go out for an R F P. At that meeting, Council gave direction to go negotiate with the current vendor. Current vendor is Payless Pools. So during that time, we spoke with the vendor. And he is willing to do the work, which is basically two twenty-two water features that are cleaned on a on a weekly basis. His existing cost was sixty-five hundred dollars per month, and he's requesting an increase to seventy-five hundred dollars a month. The main factors were inflation, some slight changes to the scope of work, and cost of supplies that are increasing, and particularly that of chlorine. So with that, happy to take any questions.
All right. Is there any discussion or emotion for the approval of item number thirteen?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number fourteen, Lakeview Park Playground Improvements, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding. I would like to call upon Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
Wow. Thank you again. Thank you. Happy to be here. Again, I want to say I'm grateful for the A C today, grateful for my staff for keeping up with the A C. This one here, Lakeview Park Playground, so I'm happy to bring this to you. First off, I do want to introduce our school, Little Lake School Superintendent, Dr. Kreen, if you could wave your hand. And also the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Liz Seymour, who was two each run. Didn't want to acknowledge both of them for their efforts in getting this item to you. If you recall, earlier in the year, we had a major issue with trying to get a part for that playground. And it took us approximately nine months to get that part from the time that we ordered that part for the playground. And it was closed during that time. After we got the part, I had several meetings with Ms. Seymour, and we talked about collaborating on trying to renovate and replace this playground. Just to serve your memory, in this past summer, the school district had entered into a contract with Dave Bang to do several of their playgrounds at several schools. During this time, working with the school district and the elementary school as well, staff along with Liz's help on this, we looked at four different alternatives. Somebody's hungry, I guess, okay? I looked at several different alternatives to present. And among among the three parties, we did settle on one particular that I have a few pictures of, a few renderings to show you. We did get a quote from Dave Bang, and that's why we're here before you today. At the same time, the school district was doing some concrete slab work over by the basketball and the handball court areas. That works actually started already, because they're trying to get that done before the school year. It didn't happen, but they're still in process of of doing that. The agreement that we bring before you, total cost of both projects is six hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. In this agreement, the city amount would not exceed six hundred thousand dollars. We do have funding available from two C I P projects. As you remember, in the C I P, we did have a Lakeview Park Playground project. And we also had sidewalk improvement projects at Lakeview Park. So we do have sufficient funding to cover the six hundred thousand dollars, should we wish to to go forward with this. So here's some renderings here that we got from Dave Bang. So it it is in the same footprint that it is now. Happy to tell you that we're going to be taking out the sand that's there. That is our last sand playground in the city. We'll we'll be replacing that with synthetic turf, so it'll be our first playground with synthetic turf. Here's just a cut, a more zoomed in portion of the slide. Very interactive. And again, we did look at four different alternatives. And working with the school district and the school, this is the one that we found would be the most appropriate for this park and and school to share. The colors as well, we went with the more vibrant colors, the the aquas and the lavenders. And that's looking at all three apparatuses that you see there. And with that, happy to take any questions. Again, just, I I want to say it again. The Seymour did fantastic on coordinating this with Dave Bang for giving us all the information on that. If you recall previously, I told you, nobody wants to deal with the state architect. The state architect for us is at least a year to deal with. That's not a good day and a good year. School district has volunteered to do that for us and to fast track that, so very appreciative of them doing that. And trying to get this thing through, since we've been working on this probably since about February.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, just wanted to comment that, again, appreciate the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. I've worked in four different cities where there isn't cooperation and for for joint projects like this, and we had it here, and I really appreciate that. I know the council wanted to see that. And we got that. And I thank Noe and his staff, working with the the school district, that was a great collaboration, as stated earlier.
I just want to say that it's been long overdue. You know, with the park in general, I know that having the kids playing out there, you know, during school, school hours, it's always, you know, you would always have to have like three or four staff people around just to make sure that, you know, none of them got hurt on on, you know, on these playgrounds. And it's just great to see that we're removing the sand. I think it it works out for everyone. You know, especially when you have individuals that have special needs, you know, sand is pretty tempting in many different ways, so I'm glad to see that that's being removed. I just want to thank the the school district itself, Dr. Kreen, Ms. Seymour, ever since you came in. Noticed the difference in what you're trying to do and with our city, and I'm glad that you're pushing us as a city and our staff to make sure they're following with their with their outlook. So I do appreciate all that you're doing. I and I commend you that, you know, with your hard effort and hard work that what you're doing for Little Lake City School District. So thank you very much.
Madam? If this goes forward, when it goes forward, do we have like a timeframe or when this would happen? Just knowing that, living in that area, how much the the parents complained and the residents complained because it was closed down for so long? It closed, it being closed down again, but I mean, there's something good about it. You know how long it would be for?
I don't have that answer, but hopefully Liz has that answer. I know she's doing a lot of playgrounds right now.
Yeah, the, once we procure, and that's really what's going to take us time. Until we get the the new playground equipment procured, the old playground is still open.
Yeah.
When we do close it down, typically, it's about two weeks.
Oh, perfect.
So it really doesn't take much time. We will put temporary fencing around so that it's very safe during the whole time construction occurs. We did that with the concrete slab. Some of those had gaps as as much as two inches apart. And we'd had a lot of incidents with children getting hurt, so that has been fixed at this point. I think we're just waiting on the painting of the handball court to make.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Liz. Anything?
No, it was a good project.
I just wanted to say, too, this is so beautiful. I think that the kids are going to love the coloring and elimination of the sand. I want to thank the school district. I am so excited to send my toddler over here so he can play. And, you know, you got to build a slide for us adults, too, because sometimes they want, they want the grandma and papa to take them on the slide. And it's hard, it's hard to squeeze in there. I I don't worry, Noe, I didn't get on, I won't get on these little slides. But I want to thank you because a lot of the residents are asking, what time does it open? Why isn't it opening when the other parks are opening? So they ask a lot of questions and why are we, if we're getting a new park, why are you waiting for the parts for the the old slide, you know, so we already know that it's taking, it's going to take a little bit of time. So that's why we're going to get the the parts for the slide for this one, and then we're going to renovate. Thank you so much. I read the minutes on how you're doing all the the backup paperwork, the coordination of everything. We appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So is there any other discussion or emotion for the approval of item number fourteen?
I'll move. A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number fifteen, Town Center Hall Plaza Outdoor Lighting Issue Purchase Order. I would like to call upon Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
I'll move. I mean, all we're really talking about is twenty-five hundred dollars extra, so for lighting, if you guys are okay.
Sure. We need a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. And now we're going to move on to presentations. Proclamation proclaiming September two thousand twenty-two as National Preparedness Month. I would like to call upon the Deputy City Clerk to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas National Preparedness Month occurs each September since two thousand and four, providing the city of Santa Fe Springs with an opportunity to promote disaster preparedness and emphasize the importance for citizens to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency. And whereas the entire city of Santa Fe Springs community can take actions to prepare to respond and recover from any natural or man-made disaster, no matter how big or small. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Santa Fe Springs is hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-two as National Preparedness Month, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there anything else on that presentation? All right, good. We'll move on to sixteen B, Introduction of New Santa Fe Springs Department of Fire Rescue Administrative Assistance. I would like to call upon Battalion Chief Chad Van Muteren.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm pleased to present our two new administrative assistants to the council this evening. First, first, I would like to introduce Caroline Venegas. Caroline, you please stand. Caroline, or as we found out about a month after she got hired, prefers to be called Carol. She grew up in Bell, she where she attended Warren High School in Downey. After graduating high school, she attended California State University, Los Angeles, where she earned her bachelor's degree in English. Currently, she resides in Downey. Carol's goals are to start her master's degree and buy a home. Thank you, Carol. Next, I'd like to introduce Adriana Orozco. Unfortunately, Adriana couldn't be here with us this evening. She had another commitment to go to. But a little bit about Adriana. She grew up in Whittier, where she graduated from California High School. She currently resides in Downey. Adriana enjoys spending time with her family and learning to cook new cooking recipes. Adriana is a huge Dodgers fan and claims the most famous person she's ever met is Walker Buehler, or as many of you may know, Butane. With that, I would like to welcome Caroline and Adriana, the Santa Fe Springs employee family, and we're looking forward to their future success with our city.
Thank you, Chad, and and welcome aboard. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to sixteen C. Department of Fire Rescue Presentation of a New Santa Fe Springs Fire Rescue Vehicle Truck Eight One One. I would like to call upon Battalion Chief Chad.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. On October eighth, two thousand twenty, City Council authorized the purchase of a new Pierce Arrow X T one hundred-foot legacy platform aerial apparatus. Our apparatus committee comprised of fire department members and city mechanics. Worked numerous hours designing the fire apparatus to fit the needs of our city. After months of design, fabrication of our new fire truck began at the Pierce Manufacturing Plant in Wisconsin. This truck is designed to pump fifteen hundred gallons of water per minute. It has fire hoses, nozzles, providing fires. It carries the jaws of life for cutting trapped victims out of vehicles. It also carries an assortment of rope and hardware for high and low angle rope rescues. A couple of safety features I'd like to point out. First is a thirty-five-square-foot aerial platform that you can see on the front of the ladder right there. We like to call it the basket. It's located at the tip of the ladder and can safely carry firefighters to the roof for firefighting operations or safely remove victims from an elevated location. This is much safer than having people walk up and down a fully extended ladder that can be as high as one hundred feet in the air. The other safety feature I'd like to point out is the new clean cab. As many of you may know, job-related cancer is one of the leading causes of firefighter deaths. These cancers are found to be primarily caused by toxic and carcinogenic contaminants that are found at most fires. These contaminants embed themselves in firefighter turnouts and continue to expose firefighters long after the fire is over. The clean cab has storage compartments for each firefighter to store their firefighter clothes and equipment to eliminate the constant exposure of having them in the cab while driving to and from calls. As a department, we are excited to reduce the risk of exposure to our fire department personnel, so they may all go home safely to their families. Fire personnel conducted approximately forty-eight hours of training on the new truck. I'm happy to announce that it was put in service on August twenty-seventh at eight-thirty P M. We'll have the truck set up outside in the parking lot immediately following the meeting, and I'd like to invite you all to come out and look at it, and we can answer any questions you may have at that time. Thank you.
I just had a question, Chief. I know it goes high up there. What do you do inside that basket? I know it's a probably a question that a lot of kids ask, but I want to ask that. What is, what is the main purpose of the basket up there?
The basket is to safely transport firefighters to a roof or to get victims down from an elevated location. It also has controls to control the ladder. As you can see on the front of the truck right there on the basket, it has two nozzles. Each has the ability to float two thousand gallons a minute. And when elevated above a fire, firefighters can stand up in the basket safely while being strapped in and control those nozzles to put water directly on the fire.
And how many people would you say it's safe to have in there?
It'll hold about seven hundred and fifty pounds, so it depends on how big the people are you're putting in there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to now to sixteen D, Presentation from Solid Ed Enrichment Action. I would like to call upon Johnny Torres.
First of all, thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking your time to hear me out. I'm Johnny Torres, so Solid Ed Rich in Action, Program Coordinator for Solid Ed. And but the team is actually Bianca, who actually does the fieldwork here, Bianca. And my brother Manuel Vara, who's also a veteran, he couldn't be here tonight because he had a commitment with V A. But and I also joined the team, but I'm coordinating the teams between East Los Angeles, La Puente, and now Whittier, Pico de Vera, and Santa Fe Springs. So Solid Ed Rich in Action, who's who I work for, has been a nonprofit that's been in existence since nineteen seventy-two, providing intervention services mainly in the first district. It was actually started in nineteen seventy-two by the Concerned Mothers of East L A that that were losing their sons to gang violence, and that's why they created this programming. And so most of, up until now, most of the services that Solid Ed Rich in Action has been in District Two and in the and the city of L A and District One, providing services in Willowbrook, Compton, South Central. You know, I personally worked these Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, Alsereno. Now I'm overseeing East L A, La Puente, and we just recently got the blessing of each funding from John Hassan to provide services for the city of Whittier, Pico de Vera, and Santa Fe Springs. So what that means, if we could go to the next slide, where we offer, we offer an array of services, mainly, primary, main concern for John Hassan is crisis response in the area and and then also connected to crisis response, we have the U S. in the area and then also connected to crisis response, we have the USC LAC victim support. So what that means, I actually have several of our team members actually have clearance into U S Medical Hospital. We have an in-house intervention team within the hospital. So whenever we're notified of a crisis, we connect with the family, and we also have a Victor's of Crime Advocate that works directly in SEIA. So we walk the families through the process because a lot of times they'll receive a flyer, they don't know what it means. A lot of times they're grieving their loved ones in the hospital. They don't know what's going to occur. They don't know what's available to them. And then they don't, and a lot of times they got to reach out to Sacramento. It's a long process. So our Victim of Crime Case Manager Advocate will walk them through the process, fill out the paperwork with them and break down an array of services that are offered from covering all hospital expenses because sometimes family members, they'll qualify for emergency medical, but it doesn't cover the ambulance. We could still create a hardship on the family. Victor's of Crime will cover all those expenses. It could cover relocation, and the family doesn't feel safe for their ad. It could cover loss of wages for a family member to stay home, where a loved one while they're healing and while they recoup. It covers for counseling expenses. And worst case scenario, it could raise up to now they just increased it to twelve thousand for funeral expenses. So but a lot of times the family doesn't know through the process of how to go through it, how do I fill this out? And then unfortunately, because we've been around so long, we have relationships with mortuaries that would front their service so that the family could have the, the wake and the funeral in a timely manner as opposed to waiting till the funds are allocated for Sacramento because they know that we're good and in other relationships we have in the communities. So the families could have their wake when the proper time is needed and the, and the mortuary will front the services. So that's how we get involved. We provide, you know, crisis therapy within our services. We have healing circles for our parents and for youth in the families and the victims. We have an array, so that's why we respond to the crisis when it occurs. We also have, you know, gang intervention services, which is our youth and adult diversion, also connects to a reentry. So anybody, any youth that's either associate or affiliated or multi-generation, not necessarily got to be from a gang or a tag-banging crew themselves, but if they have multi-generation, or they're associating with the group, or they're actually in the group, our goal is to intervene, build a relationship, and hopefully inspire a more positive direction for them to go. Reentry, obviously, if they're coming out of the system, we have an array of services. If probation requires them to take anger management, domestic violence, substance abuse, tattoo removal, job placement, job development, whatever it be, we provide those services for free. We have our center in East L.A., and we have one that we're developing in La Puente, and we're hoping soon to have one here in District Four, so they won't have to travel as far. But if need be, we could go to their home and provide the service. We could do a one-on-one with them wherever they feel secure. If it's in a park, their backyard, they could have a section with a session with either of our councils that run our workshops and any of those things, whether it be substance abuse, anger management, whatever it is, we provide for free. We have tattoo removal that has no waiting list. If they get on the list for tattoo removal, they'll immediately get their appointments and start the process. We have, and then youth adult diversion, we also provide, which is a beautiful program. If I have, I've had several clients of my own successfully close out their diversion. So that means we become a youth that's a first-time offender for a nonviolent crime. The judge will, whatever the, the decision is made, the judge will suspend the decision and allow them to go through the program for a year. If they successfully complete the program in a year, the judge will erase whatever their offense was as if it didn't exist. They don't get probation, no fines. It's truly a second chance for you to have their record clean and move on with their life if they made a bad decision. We got, like I said, substance abuse, domestic violence, anger management, tattoo removal, healing circles, job placement, development, everything we provide is for free to the community. And the next slide, another one of our big programs is, well, we're here to put on a corporate because that time was just for East L.A., but now it's Urban Art Program, which in East L.A., and we also have a mobile unit where we could do graphic design, which in our graphic design program, we could show them how to do the program, but we also have vinyl printing, silk screening, and direct-to-garment printing. So that's pretty much the industry standard now. We could teach them how to run those programs to create their own products. We have we have entrepreneurship training. So right here, for example, the brother is painting on top. He actually came to the program as a client out of prison. Now he's one of our workers and instructors. That's his drawing sketch on the bottom where you can see he sketched out Denzel Washington and Amelia Edward James almost, and, and you can see he's impeccable with his art skills. So he inspires young people. The bash we have on the corner is a group of young men that were from Boyle Heights. They used to like to hang out at a park called Wabash Park. They created this clothing line, the bash. We showed them how to copyright. We showed them how to license. We showed them how to, to do their own promoting. Now they're doing so great that they actually create their own LLC for their clothing line that they're pushing. And then we also have a Restorative Justice mural project, which we tried, and even with your help, you could give us suggestions, but we tried to identify walls that have a lot of traction for, for gang tagging or tag-banging tagging, where they'll tag, and we all know marking each other for death and crossing each other out. That could create a lot of community tension. So we've created several murals throughout Boyle Heights, East L.A., and also in La Puente. So hopefully soon here in District Four. But what we do is we try to identify a wall where this is occurring. We want to incorporate the youth from the community in the mural that most likely would be the ones to cause this. Create agreements with them and then include their vision along with the community vision. So when we create the mural, and even with the creation of the mural, and it's all free, because we provide, we, you know, with the funds of John Hassan, we provide the service. And after the mural, you'll see the murals we create are professional. I mean, amazing. If you ever want to take time, I'll show you photos of some of the beautiful work we've done. But even then, we still put a clear coat over the mural to protect the integrity of the mural. If somebody should tag on it, we'll still be able to clean it. But to be honest with you, since we include the community, none of our murals have got tagged on. And so for us, it empowers the youth, it beautifies the community, and it's a longevity solution to the graffiti gang violence that's in the community because graffiti abatement, you just buff it, they come right again. You buff it right, it's no solution. So for us, we want to empower the youth and beautify the community and reduce the violence at the same time. That's why we have our Restorative Justice Mural Project. Hopefully soon, we could put in effect in District Four and one of the areas where you could see it. But our ultimate goal is just to reduce violence, promote peace, preserve life. Even in our program, we always strongly encourage our young people to complete high school. Once the completion of high school, we have to put a portfolio together, and we encourage them to go to Art Center or to go to Otis or even Trade Tech. I take, in fact, right here in Santa Fe Springs, there's a clothing line, the warehouse clothing line called Streetwise. I'm very close friends with the, with the Streetwise, the brother that, you know, owns Streetwise. And we take him there, and all he went was Trade Tech, and he has one of the number one hot-selling hip-hop clothing lines out there. So a lot of these kids already know him. So we told him, look, you could go to Trade Tech, and this is a potential possibility for you if you should want. So like I said, we can't force anybody to do anything, but we're there just to be an option, alternative, if they should want to empower their life. So one of the things I always tell the young people when I meet them, I can't promise you anything. But what I can promise you, if you allow me, that I would do my hardest to bring into existence what you want and what you're willing to put the work at. But this is who we are. Solid Ed Rich in Action, we're SEIA, we're here in District Four now. I hope to build a strong relationship with the captain of Whittier PD, and, and we're just, we're new to the, you know, we're new to the, we're new here, but our workers are not. They grew up here. I grew up in East L.A., but they grew up here, so we have them working the field. But anything you should want from us, we're here of service. You know, we provide and.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure my colleagues have questions. I see his hand up already.
Just in case. I know personally, I, well, I don't want to overstep my boundaries with the school district, but I know that they're looking for murals to, to be done. So, you know, Dr. Kreen is right there, so you guys can, you know, talk to him. That actually helps out there, especially if it's murals that have to, that represent the history of, of their, of whatever school it may be, you know, that that would be awesome. And then too, I know this might be short notice, but maybe if you guys can get a booth, we have a Fiesta Spatios on Friday at Los Yitos Park. Yeah, this Friday. And I know Los Yitos Park is, is an area that, you know, of intervention, you know, and I'm not saying the whole park in general, but just the fact of having people, you know, just you guys being there, being seen, you never know. It may raise a question or concern because all it takes is one, you know, one person to help out. And, you know, that, that does make a difference in, in their lives and their families' lives. So if we can do that, talk to Gus right in the back and to see if you guys can get a booth and, you know, just so you guys can have your information there, that, that'd be awesome, you know, so. You know, and like I said, it's just you guys having the information. I mean, because what you're providing, it's almost like a Project One Eighty, Homeboy Industries, you know, everything that you're doing is, you know, the different programs. It's, it's great to see people trying to change their life. And, you know, when people say, hey, you know, that's why they call it even Project One Eighty, because you made a one eighty, you know what I mean? And that's, that's great what you guys are doing here. So like I said, once again, if you can talk to Gustavo and of course, Dr. Kreen, so, you know. Dr. Kreen, he can raise his hand right now, sir. Sorry about that, Dr. Kreen.
One thing too, we, we have quite a few parenting prevention classes here. It'd be great if you could connect with them to, you know, go outside the box and do different things. We have an excellent program here, but with you guys too. It goes, I mean, we can use you guys in so many ways and we can connect it. I mean, you guys are a little out of the way, but bringing it closer, I mean, you're, you're, you're back by Janus Han. You, you, that says a lot. That says a lot. So I think on behalf of the city, we're welcome you and whatever our services can help you with. If we could help one person, it makes a difference. One person is one person. So thank you for being here.
Parent awareness workshops too, because sometimes parents don't know the signs, you know, they're still looking for that Hollywood nineteen ninety cello look, and they'll be, oh, my kids done again because he's a skater or he has the Edgar haircut, but styles changed, you know, so we're going to that awareness of things to look out for as a parent too.
Right, exactly. Did you have anything? Oh, we're not done yet.
No, but just to continue to, you know, with other council members had mentioned, I think it's a great idea for Fiesta Spatios to be there as a start because it's going to be a really big event. But then also, you know, with Gus and Maricela or Eddie, you know, other functions that we have where the community, you know, congregates, just to be there, you know, just for information purposes only. You know, because like as a council member, John, you had mentioned, it's a, you never know when you're going to get somebody. And so it might be just one person, but you know, we do have different times where, you know, we have maybe like a food basket distribution or Christmas time or Fourth of July, just, you're both just for information purposes. So that'd be great.
And even, even during COVID pandemic, we were out giving out, we were giving out food and for families that were experiencing food insecurity on a weekly basis. We were out there handing out food. So anything you could imagine, because that's all I'll say, it's not just gang intervention, but it's it's really community health workers. We're here for the, the health of the community. So any way you can utilize us, please reach out.
I'll be ready to partner with you. Then do you, I know you saw, we saw many health services. Do you have any homeless outreach programs or anything?
We actually, we do. It's, we work, actually, we have in-house Lhasas in our office in East L.A.
Yeah.
But the reason we productively want to do a lot of work with the homeless, because unfortunately we realize, especially after the pandemic, a lot of the homeless encampments are more than homeless encampments, you know what I'm saying? So so like I said, since we're looking at that ailment in the community, whether it be, you know, drug sales or whether it be trafficking or whatever it be, it kind of all ties into the same thing. So our goal is to address that and, and, and provide alternatives to the best. We can't force. Some people might say, forget you guys, I'm being real. But some people, like, like we're saying, I'm, I'm looking for a way. I'm tired. I've reached my bottom. We want to be able to pull them.
And I'm glad you guys are doing that too, because that's something that they've been talking about in the Gateway Cities Cog, and then even with the homeless, there's a homeless committee with Gil Sadate. So if you need to reach out to him, you know, besides Kim Barnett from Lhasa, you know, it's mental health. It's a lot of these other things that, you know, you hit it spot on when you said a homeless encampment is not the same like it used to be. You know, you, you have, you know, you literally have human trafficking, drug trafficking. So a lot of people don't realize the, the effects of what they're doing nowadays in these encampments. And I know our, you know, our captain realizes it, but still, it's, you know, it, it's, it's hard with these individuals that just don't want the help, but those that do, any services that we can help. And I know starting off with, while they're young, I mean, you know, you know, that's why I brought up Dr. Kreen. I'm glad he's here because it's a blessing that, you know, you know, having somebody like this or having you guys come into the school district helping out. I mean, of course, there's policies and rules that you got to follow with them. But if you can connect to the families now and teach them, you know, and empower them, it helps out because a lot of them, you know, there's, you know, there's some families that are Spanish-speaking and sometimes the trends, you know, when you have to translate translations, because they're not going to translate it properly. They're going to act like everything's okay. So you want to make sure that everything you can do within the school system helps out when it comes to, you know, those different effects when it comes to our kids. I mean, kids are our future, so we just have to make sure we do the best thing for them. So that's why I'm glad you're here, Dr. Kreen.
Madam Mayor, are you connected with the Whole Child? The Whole Child, we have a, do we, we still have their, do we still have the building anymore? We don't have, do we have any connection at? We have no connection at all with Whole Child? No, we do have connection with the hotel. We just don't have the built, no, I'm asking, but we have connections with the Whole Child still, correct?
We still, we still, yes.
That would be a great, because your program is for ten and older, correct? Let us connect. The Whole Child would be awesome for you because they are in the city, and they are with the city with also Janus Han, and that'd be a great program for you guys to connect with. The Hotel would be a great thing for you guys.
I'd also, I'd like, also like to say, Johnny, a great presentation. It helps a lot of people coming from, I also had a family member with addiction and anxiety and depression and, you know, the stigma is, people are scared of it. But until you have a family member that, that, and you've been through it and your loved one is suffering and hurting themselves and you feel like you're helpless, but then there's, there's programs like yours that can help them. And you feel like, you know, there's somebody out there that we can reach out. I am an executive board member to Los Angeles Centers of Alcohol and Drug Abuse. I want you to connect with them. I'll give you the, the contacts. They, they have similar programs that I think that you will work well with. So yes, and I just want to thank you. This presentation helps so many people. What you're doing is so positive and inspiring for our community that needs it. There's a lot of people that need it, but there's a lot of people that are embarrassed of it. They don't want to talk about it. When I put it on Facebook, I get very little likes. If I put some, your children or something, I get a lot of likes. So it's, it's a stigma that we're trying to get through so that we don't have to be ashamed that we have a family member that has an addiction problem and we can go and get help and be proud that we're trying to do what we're doing. So thank you so much. This was a very inspiring presentation and thank God for Janus Han. Thank you. Yes, and we got your flyer. Is this, okay, thank you. Of course. We'll be talking afterwards. Thank you, Johnny. All right, where am I now? Before we move on to item number seventeen, I would like to call upon City Manager Ray Cruz to make a special announcement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, we do have a very special announcement. We have a special birthday. It's a belated birthday for Councilmember John Mora. So, so we all want to wish him, I think, I think he has a birthday pie, not a birthday cake, so he's a pie guy, which that's just like me. So let's go ahead and start saying happy birthday as Maryville brings this closer to. So on three, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear John. Happy birthday to you.
The COVID way? The COVID way, yeah.
Oh, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thought I, I had gotten away with it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, item number seventeen, City Managers and Executive Team Reports. I would like to call upon City Manager Ray Cruz.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I mentioned at the last council meeting about the August third dedication groundbreaking of the city of Santa Fe Springs Homeless to Homeowner Program. And just want to remind everybody that that's a program that's for veterans first, veterans' families first. That was Councilmember, Mayor Potem joins, and it's always makes me remember that, and I want to say it again. It is for veterans, first priority, and veterans will be their families first that are from Santa Fe Springs, and second, Santa Fe Springs families, and then after that, the whole region. But last time I didn't able to show you anything, but there was a very nice video put together by The Whole Child, which is one of the main partners, also have the Richmond Group in Habitat for Humanity. So literally, this goes from homeless and interim facilities to low-income apartments to townhomes that we bought through Habitat for Humanity. So we're going to show that video right now. It kind of highlights that really nice day that had ABC, NBC, Telemundo, everywhere. So it was a nice, nice day. So we're going to hit that right now.
The Whole Child is a nonprofit organization that has been around for sixty five years, and we provide housing, mental health, quarantine education, nutrition education services for vulnerable children and families in all of LA County, but especially in southeast LA County.
Welcome to Santa Fe Springs. We are so happy to join with the Whole Child and the County of Los Angeles to hold this incredible groundbreaking ceremony. Our city will be home to the Creative Homeless to Homeowner Campus, which starts with the Interim Housing and Supportive Services Center project that we're celebrating today.
Thank you for this vision. Thank you for this dream. Thank you for really the impossible. As you said, you hope the Whole Child does a lot of really good things. We know what the problem is, right? I don't need anybody else to tell me what the problem is. I know what the problem is. What I need is solutions. We are supporting a solution. And I've said that before, if any of my cities, any of you come up with a solution to give dignity and respect to our fellow neighbors who are finding themselves down and out, I will help you by finding money to add to your project.
I felt compelled to speak today, because this is a special, special project. This is gonna be an award-winning project. The continuum of care i- is is unheard of in any place. As you stated, we're gonna go from interim housing, low income housing, and then Habitat for Humanity, getting on a home. That's the American dream. We're gonna do the American dream right here for people.
He commends the Whole Child and the city of Santa Fe Springs for partnering in the creation of this facility.
So I thank all of you for working and partnering with the Whole Child to continue our long tradition of bringing vulnerable families the resources and services needed to become thriving members of our community. The children and families we serve need you. Our board members have all had that same mission of wanting to make the Whole Child an organization that's gonna improve the lives of so many people in the southeast county. And I think we're on our way to doing that.
So if everything goes right, and Wayne, uh, and Ben Wayne, this will be done in one year. We'll have a groundbreaking ceremony for that, for that first interim component of it. Done you, Wayne? So n- next item is that uh probably brought me back to my childhood, uh, probably two things I remember going to the market with my mother, uh, boys' market in La Marada, and then Pick and Save. And believe it or not, Pick and Save is back, and we're the first LA County city to be rebranded here um in Santa Fe Springs um right on the with your border, but it is Santa Fe Springs. That that sign will change, you'll see in a moment here. Um, with regards to um a a ribbon cutting that we had both Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Morris speak, and it was a a real nice event. And that that place was crowded, uh, and they were gonna open on, that was a Wednesday. They were gonna open on officially on Friday, but there were so many people knocking on the door on Thursday. They opened the doors on Thursday, and they've been busy ever since. So um fantastic. Uh, again, it was it was like a tap cops, it was my mom, who's ninety three now. I told her that Pick and Save is back, and she was so excited to hear that, so I'm gonna bring her myself. So um that is it from me, and we'll bring you next uh our Director of Public Works, Noin De Gatte.
Thanks, Ray. Uh, just a couple of things I want to give an update on. Uh, so we have a project over at Santa Fe Springs Park Parking Lot Expansion. And just happy to know all the demos done, uh, compaction and fine grating's done. Uh, they actually started pulling the perimeter curb and gutter out there, so it's starting to take shape uh as well as the lighting. Next, next slide. Uh, the foundations were poured, uh, electrical work is being done now. Uh, once the underground work is completed, uh, then we'll start on the pavement. Uh, so have more pictures to follow, but uh it is tracking on schedule. Next one, there's a lot of slides here, I'm gonna rifle through these real quick, uh, but if you didn't know, you're not supposed to do any outdoor watering starting today. Uh, today is the day uh we're prohibited from doing outdoor watering. I got a lot of pictures here. If you want to talk to me afterwards, it's fine, but I'm not gonna go through these. Essentially, uh, MWD's main feeder uh sprang a leak in it, uh, cracked, and they need to repair it. And what's hap- what's happening is that they're asking um basically the whole region to not water. It was kind of too hard to just say only this, the people that were affected by that pipeline to not water and have everybody else water. Uh, it's really gotta be a group effort, because if everybody keeps on watering, our supply is limited. Uh, therefore, if you heard it, the news, uh, what they're asking is everybody collectively to join in on this and to and to save water uh by not watering uh out outside. Just a couple of things, um, questions we've gotten uh from the community. It's a, it's an elimination or suspension of outdoor watering. Uh, so your lawns in particular, uh, they take uh the most water. Two weeks of not watering your lawn will not kill your lawn. It'll, it'll yellow your lawn, uh, but after the two weeks, go back to your regular cycle and the lawn will remain green uh once you continue watering. A couple of suggestions uh to put, uh, if you, if you still want to water your plants, uh, put a bucket of water in the shower with you uh to collect water there. Use that water for your houseplants or your outdoor um garden. Take shorter showers, uh, short means five minutes or less shower. Uh, do not leave water running when uh washing dishes. Again, try to fill a bucket up with water uh so you can uh wash your dishes. And you can go get more information at uh bewaterwise.com. And again, uh, it's it's planned through the twentieth of September. I'm sure you'll hear it if it ends sooner, uh, or if it's extended um through the news media. And we've posted it on our website, uh, through our social media accounts. We actually have changeable message signs out on the streets as well, asking for the community not to water during this time. Again, I'll take questions at the end. And last but not least, uh, if you've heard me say this before, the future is female. Um, I truly believe that. And uh Chad and Chief showed their uh fire, to do uh fire apparatus, uh, the ladder truck. And uh, to the best of my knowledge and everybody else I could think of, Laura Cabrera, our bus driver, actually drove that back from from the Pierce. And as far as I know, she's the first woman to drive a fire truck in our city, so wanted to commend her for doing that and uh mark that milestone. That's my, concludes my report.
Thank you, Noy. I'd like to bring up Wayne Morale, Director of Planning.
Thank you. Just have a couple items real quickly. In October of twenty twenty one, the governor office issued an executive order that aims to address the shortage of truck drivers and container storage needed to move cargo out of California, California ports. The executive order directed state agencies to find federal and private land for short-term container storage while identifying freight routes for trucks. So the state can temporarily exempt weight limits on the road. I bring this up because many of you, if you've driven along the Five Freeway, recently, you would see that there's quite a number of remnant parcels that are now being used for truck and trailer storage. These areas are owned either by Caltrans or who's the agency, Metropolitan, uh, Caltrans, they're all owned by Caltrans. And because it is a state agency, essentially, they do not have to adhere to all regulation. So we would normally not, well, not normally, period, we would not allow this type of trailer storage use, either because of its location along a major secondary highway or just the size of the parcel itself. But again, because it is owned by the state, they're allowed to do so. So if you're driving along the Five Freeway, not necessarily just in Santa Fe Springs in this area, you'll probably see this throughout the state and also on other frontages throughout the city or other cities. This is going to be very, very quite common, but again, there's not much that we can do about it. Other item, Relay for Life barbecue event. We did host such an event. It was the first time that we did hamburger and and hot dog. We actually barbecued a bloody thing and people ate it surprisingly, and they all said it tasted good, so we must have done something, okay? And granted, we didn't make as much money as fire department, but we were able to at least generate seven hundred plus dollars. So that was good for us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Now, Dino Torres, Director of Police Services.
Good evening, council. Just have one report. O- October twenty six, which is a Wednesday, is supposed to be the uh the Red Ribbon Parade. So no, we haven't had it for a couple of years. Um, last year, we put a video together with the help of the council. Um, and we're gonna use it for marketing purposes uh to get um uh some support on social media to get people out. So we're gonna be uh putting that out. And so we are, we're very appreciative of of the council doing that. It's a, it's a very beautiful video. But uh, uh, you'll be getting uh notification soon from the Family Youth Intervention Program about um the parade and uh RZPs. Okay, so we look forward to that. Again, that's October twenty six, and that's a Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Now Chief Hayward.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Um, before we go to the first slide, as you can see, we're all very proud of New Truck Eight Eleven. We really appreciate the support by the council. It's absolutely gorgeous during the day, and when you go out tonight, if you could take a quick look at it, it'll, your jaw will drop. Uh, we're on schedule to go, and uh it was supposed to be, the new engine is supposed to be inspected and brought back to uh the city. It may already be here, Kevin. And uh, once it's gone through everything at the the city yard, it'll be trained on again and put into service, and so we'll do another presentation on that engine soon. All right. So if I could get the first slide, um being the vice co-chair of the Relay for Life, I'm obligated to let everybody know that uh in about three weeks, the twenty twenty two Relay for Life will be here on September twenty fourth from twelve PM to ten PM at Lake Center Athletic Park, one one six four one Florence Avenue, and the Survivor Luncheon will be at eleven o'clock. It's a great event. It brings a lot of people together. Um, it's getting back to almost being like old times. Uh, there are twenty seven teams that are registered in this event. There's gonna be live music, DJ, fun events for the kids, food, all sorts of things uh out there. And so we encourage everybody to go and uh get out there and support. Hopefully, it won't be blazing hot. So if you can make it, that'd be great. Um, next slide. Just wanted to um say thank you to everyone who attended a Relay for Life potato bake on August eighteenth. Council members were out there, Chamber of Commerce individuals, uh, other departments were there. Sorry, Wayne, I I didn't know you were gonna do yours. But I am gonna point out a couple of things here. Um, just with the donation of three hundred potatoes by Handy Tabello and Maggie's, cinnamon rolls from uh Jen Rounds and uh Jamie Perry of JJ Sweetbones, our own uh Rick Brown, our Rick Brown's talented wife, Janine, and her uh cake pops, those are tremendous. And uh, Maple Gomez and her now famous uh banana bread. Uh, that event was more than we ever thought it was gonna be. We usually only do two hundred. When we unpacked everything, there were three hundred. Um, we had a tremendous amount of walk-ins, and we've almost completely sold out. But that event, that event raised uh forty four hundred dollars that day. And and one of the best things about this event that I've noticed, and and I want to commend all the departments on everything that they've been doing, because it's brought an awful lot of teamwork to this city and that interdepartmental, interdepartmental relationships have been fantastic. The the events that the fundraising is is being the events that everybody's doing on the fundraising are getting bigger and better. Uh, I think Public Works is right there with us. Uh, everybody's been been doing a tremendous job. So um on behalf of Relay for Life and the committee, thank you. Thank you very, very much. We uh look forward to the twenty fourth. That ends my report.
Thank you, chief. And fresh off his European vacation, Travis Hickey, Director of Finance.
The Union Council again. Uh, just one item to report. Next uh week, on Thursday, September fifteenth, the city will be hosting a health and uh benefits fair uh for employees. It'll be from nine to eleven AM at Town Center Hall. We'll have a number of uh vendors that uh serve the city for our health and dental plans, of flex spending, deferred comp, life insurance and and so forth. So so that'll be next week on September fifteenth. And following that, uh, beginning September uh nineteenth is our open enrollment period, which runs until October fourteenth. So it's uh kind of co- designed to coincide with our open enrollment period. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. And now Ed Ramirez, Community Service. Do you have anything, Ed? I know you're representing Maricela Baderas, Community Services.
Yeah, I have a few items this evening. This Friday, uh, the city is hosting the fifty fifth annual Fiesta de Spatios on Friday, September ninth, uh, beginning at six PM at Los Nietos Park. Uh, this this year's live entertainment uh will feature performances by Ballet Flocórico de Mi Jarencia. Uh, we will also include Mariachi Las Catrinas, Bandalas Angelí, Angelinas, and an encore performance by La Sonora de la Dina Mita. Uh, City Council will welcome attendees that participate in the El Grito Ceremony, which is led by the uh Council General of Mexico from Los Angeles. Um, in addition to all that, uh, there will also be arts and crafts, a kid's zone, a food court, um, the Bomberos Beer Garden or Bomberos Cantina uh that will uh be led by the the Santa Fe Springs Fire Fighter Association Local Three Five Oh Seven. Uh, Map Your Heritage activity will also be led by the Santa Fe Springs Library. Um, similar to the Independence Day, there will also be a shuttle from Town Center Hall uh as well as Betty Wilson Center, and then new this year will be including a shuttle from Gus Philosco Neighborhood Center. Uh, we're all looking forward to the great cultural event that we has host annually. Um, the Library Pub Trivia Night on August nineteenth was a full success of fun, music, food, and healthy competition. A total of twenty seven participants split into thirteen teams, enjoyed a snack buffet, as well as a selection of beer, wine, and soft drinks. Trivia included five rounds with ten questions per round, and each team used the Kahoot app to answer as fast as possible to get the, to get the most points. Um, and Patriots enjoyed themselves and are asking for another trivia night uh as soon as possible. And due to that popularity demand, library is looking to host another one uh in January. And then uh lastly, um, the community residents can now register for the annual Dia de los Muertos Sugar School workshop, uh, which will take place, the Dia de los Muertos event on October fifteenth at Heritage Park. Um, price for one sugar skull is twelve dollars, and for a family pack of three is thirty dollars. Um, that does include icing and decorating supplies uh during that event. Um, to also include, um, this year, we're hosting a community offender showcase or altar showcase uh for those families who wish to honor and celebrate the life of their loved ones. They can also register uh to take part in this uh free showcase event. Um, for more information, they could uh call Heritage Park or to or to also register that that for these events. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ed. Madam Mayor, that ends our section of team reports.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all those reports. We're moving on to item number eighteen, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Start off with Councilmember Martin. Thank you. Councilmember Mora.
None tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Zamora.
None tonight.
And I have none. And now council comments, uh, starting off with Councilmember Mora.
Just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Um, first and foremost, uh, congratulations to um Carol Adriana. Uh, welcome to our our team. Uh, you're, you join a great city, so we welcome you here. Um, also Johnny and what is it, uh, Bianca? Thank you for that great presentation, and we look forward to partnering with you guys and, you know, just being here to help our community. Uh, and also Dr. Crane, uh, you know, you're helping, you know, kind of be like the, go between with our playground and our public works. It's gonna be a complete asset now to the school, but also to our community. And um, had the opportunity to go to a funeral, uh, Mr. Chance funeral, who had turned one hundred and one, one of our older residents here in our city. Uh, it was an honor to, you know, be uh with uh at the funeral with uh with his family. Um, I did attend with uh some of our council members, you know, a couple of dances at the Neighborhood Center, so. I did attend with some of our council members, you know, a couple of dances at the neighborhood center. So that team always does a great job. But just with that, stay cool. We'll see you guys on Friday. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Mora. So now we have Councilmember Martin.
Do what John said. Welcome to our city. And when you come into our city, you become our family. So welcome. It was great going to Pick and Save. It's like I said, it was like, it was memories of when you're a kid. It, it was great. It was clean. It was nice. It was stuff that was good. It wasn't like just non, non-name brand. It was actually name brand stuff. It was pretty fun. I think Ray left with two, two cartfuls. Oh, three, three. But it was great. It was great. It seems like our city is welcoming more businesses. There's more business and thank you for the chamber for that. I mean, it's, you just see more opening of, of businesses. It's great. Dr. Korean, thank you for being here. It's, it's a great project about the Lakeview Park. I mean, that park is always needs help. So thank you. Fiesta de Españos is one of our biggest things and it's great. It's going to have, it's, if you guys are going to be there, you guys are going to love it. It's going to be really, really great. And just stay cool. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. And now we have Mayor Pro Tem Zamora.
I too want to welcome our new staff, you know, thank you for, for being here. And not only that, thank you for being a part of our city. The two young ladies that were hired from, from the fire department are from the city of Downey. So that's great to hear that you guys are right next door. You're our neighbors. Of course, John, happy birthday or happy belated birthday. I hope you had many blessings. I know that you do with your family, your kids and of course your lovely wife. So I'm, I'm pretty sure you enjoyed yourself and, you know, on your birthday. So other than that, we know we have this heat wave and we have plenty of cooling centers. So if you guys, you know, know of individuals that don't have, you know, air conditioning, send them on in. You know, we have the Gus Philosco Neighborhood Center. We also have, you know, if they need to come into any of our other facilities, pretty sure we can open up other facilities that we have. You know, even out here in our little lobby area, it's nice and cool at times. You guys want to come in here, you know, it's perfectly fine. Library too, you know, these, you know, so also on a side note, you know, the monies have been rolling out for library. So just in case you guys are not aware, there's money out there for librarian. There's also money out there for fire and police. And then there's also, what's the third, the fourth one? No, I just drew a blank. But other than that, I mean, do all that you guys can to put in for these services. The state is actually, you know, they just had the assessment rollout. And not to, you know, I just want to let you know that the city of Santa Fe Springs, when it came to our property value, if you guys are not aware, the property value for the city of Santa Fe Springs, for the whole city is ten billion dollars. The increase from that was six hundred million from last year to this year. Of course, that's all, you know, that's all our businesses that were increased by six hundred million dollars. It's a lot of money. And, you know, recently we were asking for a business license tax. All we were asking for was seven point five million. So out of sixteen, six hundred million dollars that they just raised, you know, you know, when people are saying that they're, you know, they're struggling. Well, you know what? As a city, we're also struggling. So other than that, I do appreciate what the school board is doing. You guys are going out there. You guys just passed the bond and you guys are going to make thirty-six million dollars. So I do commend you and your school board on that, Dr. Korean, and let them know. I applaud them just for make, you know, taking the leap of faith and doing everything necessary for their schools. You can see all the production that's being done on all nine schools. And not only that, some of the things that they are actually working on will also help us when it comes to our, you know, traffic signals, also crosswalks, lighted crosswalks. So a lot of things that the school district is going to mandate, hopefully us along with our, you know, public works department, does everything that we can to help you guys out. And of course, not, you know, as a city, we, we need to work together with you guys. So, you know, and I know that you guys eventually are going to be doing more infrastructure, painting of the schools, looking to do a lot of different things for Little Lake City School District. So I do commend you guys on that. When it comes to our new visitors, thank you. Thank you guys for showing up. Thank you guys for being here. So la vida enrichment action. So I mean, the action part is what we need. You know, people can talk all they want, but it's action and actions are louder than words. So I do appreciate you guys, you know, the fact that you guys came out here and, you know, I mean, talking to Dr. Korean, my mom's the president of the school board. So makes it pretty easy. So, you know, having, having that connection and, you know, of course, I mean, I don't have a choice when it comes to helping out kids. You know, it's pretty much has always been instilled in us, being a school teacher for, for Little Lake City School District just allows us to, to do our part. So I do thank you guys for coming out here and I just welcome all you guys in, you know, to the new rig eight eleven. Thank you very much. You know, it's, it's great to see that. And of course, I mean, I always had the thought process of, you know, when fires, when you see people coming down the ladder, I just thought how many blisters they probably got from the heat from the ladder. And I think this just makes it a lot safer and a lot easier. So it is a blessing to see. And the fact that Laura was the first one to, to drive that rig, I think that's awesome. So maybe we can post that on social media. You know, comment, you know, that would be awesome. So other than that, you guys take care. God bless and have a great night.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Zamora. And what else do you say? But I do have a little bit to say. So I wanted, I wanted to also add Adriana Carnofal to the Family Human Services. I apologize. I, I did want to put her on the Family Human Services. And I also wanted to thank our, our Parks and Rec for our Western Dance on Friday. We had a good time dancing and just watching people have, our seniors were amazing. And I saw our Councilmember Mora out there. So we just had a great time. I want to thank everybody that attended and all of our staff for all their support. And everybody for the Relay for Life, you're trying to fatten us up because that was some good food. You know, so we had a pastrami, we had Jersey Mike's and we just had everything and it's for a good cause. You know, my mom had breast cancer and, you know, I always see everybody else that has passed away and their families have had cancer and people that are in remission. I mean, they're just, we just need to always be there to support. So thank you for the Relay for Life lunches and fundraisers. It was great. And I just wanted to also say congratulations to Carol and Adriana. Congratulations. And you're going to have a great time working for our city because they're such great people. I just wanted to also say that if I could read my own writing, the Sister City, we have our Sister City that needs, definitely needs help with rides. We have our Navajo guests coming in on Thursday. And I just want to let everybody know that when we separated from Sister City, we didn't separate to say we wouldn't help them. We said that we would help our, our committee and I want to help. And I do not want our senior citizens driving in the middle of night, picking people up. I think it's dangerous. And I would like to see people step up in our community and offer Ms. Frances Carvajal help with getting these, these guests to their hotel room. And please, I do not want to see our, our senior citizens driving. Myself, I went up the curb a while back because I, I know it sounds funny, but my husband does all the driving and when we're pretty far, he does the driving for me. So I went up the curb and I won't do that again because people, my kids get mad at me. So I just want to make sure that our seniors are safe. I wanted, you know, maybe talk to our city manager and see what we can do because we never said that we were going to cut people off. We said that we were going to help you and that's what the city is about, family and helping. So I wanted to see if we can get something done about that. Remember our cooling centers. We got a lot going on and believe me, it's hot out there. We all know. And I just want everybody to be safe. There's a lot of seniors out there that don't have central air and heating and I just want to make sure that they're safe. I just also wanted to thank our Johnny Torres. Matt, I just want to commend you for a great presentation and we're going to connect you with some fine people that's going to collaborate with you. Let's get the city going. All right? And with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much and have a blessed evening. Thank you.